Hello, and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee Meeting for Wednesday, July 1st. My name is Louise Chris, and with us today is Megan Aiken, our sign language interpreter. City Council will discuss the following for preliminary votes. Finance and Law Committee, Mr. LaVella, Chair. Bill 440, An Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administration, Article 9, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities by Adding Chapter 179-G to Establish the LGBTQIA+ Commission in Order to Advocate for Equity for the LGBTQIA+ Community in Pittsburgh. Bill 448, Resolution Declaring that Black Lives Matter and Black Communities Matter in the City of Pittsburgh, Sponsored by Councilmember Burgess. Public Safety Services Committee, Mr. O'Connor, Chair. Bill 423, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a five-year professional services agreement or agreements with Cover Your Assets for a Web-Based Secondary Employment Scheduling System in an Amount Not to Exceed $853,925. Bill 441, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the U.S. Department of Justice for Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding and Further Providing for an Agreement in Expenditures Not to Exceed $676,895 for this State of Purpose. Public Works Committee, Mr. Coghill, Chair. Bill 436, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into a Temporary Right of Entry and License Agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and the Four Homeowners for the Purpose of Replacing a Slope Through Soil Stabilization at the Rear of the Homeowner's Property Adjacent in Brick Park. Innovation Performance and Asset Management, Mrs. Strasburger, Chair. Bill 442, Resolution Amending Resolution 389 of 2019, which Authorizes the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements or Amendments or Existing Agreements to Purchase Exela Civic Platform and Exela Citizen Access Instryction and Cloud Hosting Services so as to Extend the Contract an Additional Year Until June 30th, 2021. An Increase Not to, and the Increase Not to Exceed Cost From $1,269,962 to $1,289,919.29. Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Ms. Gross, Chair. Bill 362, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh Sewerage Facility Plan for Duncan Street Townhomes, 5308 through 5314 Duncan Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15201. Bill 363, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewerage Facility Plan for 52nd Street Townhomes at 724 and 728 52nd Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15201. Bill 364, Resolution Adopting a Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh Sewerage Facility Plan for the 39th Street Homes at 204, 206, and 208 39th Street, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania 15201. Bill 437, Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Sewerage Facility Plan for the Fort Condominiums, 2637 through 2641 Penn Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA 15222. And Bill 438, Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewerage Facility Plan for the Pittsburgh Distilling Company, 2401 Smallman Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15222. Thank you. That concludes the reading for today. Have a great day.
Good morning, and welcome to the Standing Committee for a Wednesday, July 1st, 2020. Our first order of business is to comment, and I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. I believe we have a number of speakers. Our first speaker is Beth Rupert. Is Beth Rupert on the line?
I am. I'm here.
Yes, if you give your name and neighborhood, and then your three minutes, we'll begin.
Yes, hello, my name is Beth Rupert. Good morning, Council. I am the owner of 186 Home Street. I wanted to start by providing a closing testimony from yesterday concerning my passionate plea not to honor a slave owner. This fact is not a ploy just to get your vote, but this is something that is at the core of my being, and I have been publicly vocal about this injustice for months, well before George Floyd's death and the Black Lives Matter movement. I would like to explain the facts about the sale of the house. The stakeholders claim that I did not properly market this house. This is a ridiculous statement. I have a real estate license, and the house was going to be sold originally as a 1031 exchange. There is no law against selling your own home. The house had an independent market analysis done by Berkshire Realty with a recommended listing price of $550,000. In 2018, the property that I was exchanging fell through, so we were selling it straight out. At that time, the house was habitable, but needed a significant amount of work on to get it up to code. I had nine letters of intent on this house. The problem is that when the banks went in, they could not give the loans out, as the work that is needed on the house far exceeds the house's worth. Today, since the house was hit by a wind burst, and it is condemned by a reputable structural engineer, this has made it more difficult to find a buyer that wants to rehab it. The other problem is the house cannot be changed to commercial. It can only be a single or multifamily home, as we had buyers that went down there to get a variance, and zoning denied it. Thus, the bed and breakfast can never be in there. Keith Cochran says he has buyers that are refused to call back. Who are they? Please get their names and phone numbers, as this is an outright lie. You can call my answering machine today at 412-487-9152, and the sale offer still exists on there. This house has been covered by DWPXI, so it has been more than properly marketed. By Keith Cochran's own admission, he has known about the sale of this house since 2018, and has never made an offer to purchase this home. At the referral Sarah Quinn, I even personally went to Rick Alulie, who is the savior of old homes, to save the apartments, and he is not interested in this house. I received a letter from Preservation Pittsburgh and the Lawrenceville Stakeholders at the end of May stating that they are still interested in finding a buyer for this house, but the COVID has delayed, and they need more time. The house has been for sale for over three years, and there is no time, as the house is dangerous, is falling down, and we are in financial ruin. We chose the current buyer, as he wants to put peaceful townhomes that blend in with the community, and would bring in much need of revenue for the City of Pittsburgh. The City of Zone, the zoning board, has approved his plans, and that is when the stakeholders have filed this nomination. Please vote no, as this violates so many civil rights, including our Fifth and Fourth Amendment rights, without just compensation, and permits people with no vested interest a right to ruin a family. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Rupert. Is Eric Rupert on the line?
I'm sorry, he was unable to attend today.
Okay.
He will not be talking. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker then will be Gary Kilmeier. Is Gary Kilmeier on the line? Second call, Mr. Gary Kilmeier. If not, is Matt Stooki on the line? Matt Stooki? Is Matt Stooki on the line? Seeing none, that will end our speakers for today, and we will now move on to our Standing Committee Agenda, and would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Burgess. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
This is Cal Smith.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. LaVella, Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Uh, I'm here. I'm sorry, I didn't hear my name called.
And Revs on the meeting as well, Kim.
Okay.
I apologize. I think there was technical issues on my end.
Yeah, it was. It was going in and out. The audio was going in and out.
Seven members present.
Thank you. That will take us to our first committee for today, which is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. We have two new papers. First paper is Bill 440.
Bill 440, An Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administration, Article 9, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities by Adding Chapter 179-G to Establish the LGBTQIA+ Commission in Order to Advocate for Equity for the LGBTQIA+ Community in Pittsburgh.
Motion?
Motion to approve. Brief discussion, please.
Second.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, thank you. I would just like to read into the record a letter that all members received last night from Richard Parsakian, who is a member of the Advisory Council as it exists now. He writes, "I urge all of you to please support the upcoming legislation to form the City of Pittsburgh's LGBTQIA+ Commission. As an original member of the current Advisory Council, we have much work to do to complete to assure the rights of all LGBTQ people, residents in the City of Pittsburgh," forgive me, my phone closed out, "and so that they are protected and address many of the inequities and challenges our community still faces. The makeup of this commission will have broad support, and will finally establish a link between the city and our community. It needs to serve and hear from more of us directly. I appreciate the continued support the City Council has given to our community in the past. Now is the time to allow for proposals of new legislation, and listen to experts in each of the commissioners' fields of knowledge. I have been honored to serve the LGBTQIA+ Community, the Mayor, City Council, as an Advisory Council Member, and hope to continue so as the Commissioner is so appointed." And that's signed by Richard Parsakian. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 448.
Bill 448, Resolution Declaring that Black Lives Matter and Black Communities Matter in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve with discussion, please.
Second.
I would like to offer an amendment by substitution. We have made some changes in the language, and I will discuss that in a moment, but first of all, I have an amendment by substitution.
Second.
Do you want me to talk about the amendment first, or do you want to just amend it, and then I'll talk about it as a, rather than do it twice?
Let's amend then discuss.
All right.
So all those in favor of the amendment by substitution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is amended. Discussion, Councilman Burgess?
So earlier, I sent a copy of this amendment by substitution to all members of council and to, I think, all city council. And so basically, the resolution proclaims that in Pittsburgh, Black Pittsburgh matters. It has three parts to it. It is that Black lives matter, which is certainly to the health and welfare, protect the health and welfare of Black people in Pittsburgh. Second of all, Black communities count, which means to prioritize investments in historically African-American communities. 60% of all African-Americans in Pittsburgh live in African-American communities. And second, and third of all, Black wealth matters, because, as we know, African-Americans are under-resourced, and so this promotes employment, entrepreneurship, and homeownership among African-Americans. And then the second part of this is to the city to adopt, really, five strategic investment principles. I believe if we're saying that we're committed to Black lives and Black lives mattering, we also must commit to reinvesting in Black places and spaces to create sustainable Black communities. We must rebuild Black communities for Black people, by Black people, with our partners and allies. And so the five strategic investments in the legislation, I'll go them this quickly. One is to prioritize investment in community-based violence and prevention programs, and police reform. So we are doing that. Second of all, to prioritize investments in community and economic development projects in Black communities. Third, prioritize investment in local community-based and faith-based organizations in Black communities to give them the wherewithal to participate as representatives of the community in their future. Fourth is to prioritize investment in health, educational, public, and social services, homelessness, all that sort of social service stuff that we know. In order to build robust communities, in communities that have their disadvantage, we need extended social services. And then five, prioritize investment in workforce development, Black entrepreneurship, and homeownership, which is the primary way individual families build wealth. And if you read some of the research, it will begin to talk to you about why wealth building in Black communities, in Black, for Black people, is essential for any long-term rehabilitation of the African-American community. And so that's the essence of the legislation. I'll say a couple of quick things, that, you know, the primary effect of institutional racism and overt discrimination and oppression is disproportionate poverty and low quality of life for African-Americans. So we must ensure that racial reconciliation also includes specific financial investments. In Pittsburgh, I want to suggest to you that a way to do this, a beginning way to do this, is to begin to invest in the historic business districts. For years, the business districts were the hub and center of life for African-Americans, and those business districts, for a variety of reasons, were taken away. And what has remained now is ghost towns without stores, restaurants, drugstores, clothing stores. And so in order to rebuild these communities, one of the things we need to do is rebuild their business districts. As you know, the new thing among this generation is being able to walk, you know, not using transportation, be able to walk to amenities, and being self-sufficient as a community. And so I believe that's important. And then probably last but not least, and this is sort of a guiding principle for mine, for me, that as we move forward, and we say that Black Pittsburgh matters, what that really means is to rebuild Black communities for Black people, by Black people, with our partners and allies. And so that we are creating a community for the people who already live there, and their participation along with others. And so what I hope this to be is a guiding principles of how we, together as a city, can move forward in response to, certainly, what we see on our streets and the national recognition of institutional racism that has prevented African-Americans from fully participating in this country, in this light, in this place of land, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. We have, you know, many generations been denied full participation. And so I want to begin to lay out, moving forward, what that way looks like. And so I also want to say that, you know, I am completely convinced that the moment that, you know, the fierce, you know, what Obama talked about, the urgency of now, fierce urgency of now, that we are in that moment, that we can transform our country and our city. And I want to take the first step to say what that can be. And I do realize that it cannot be based on division. It cannot be based on division or on any sort of petty petty pursuit. We have to pursue the common good. And it's time now. It's been time, over time, but it's now time for us to make these bold declarations that we know are true, that African-Americans are treated differently in this country and in the city. I, and I want to say this, I think this is true. I respect the pain of all groups who have been disaffected. And that's true, because pain is pain. You know, the pain of one person, you cannot underestimate that. But I will suggest to you that if you look at the numbers, that when you add Black to any disaffected group, the outcome is worse. If you are gay and lesbian or trans in Pittsburgh, and you do face discrimination, and it's unfair, but if you're Black and gay, lesbian, and trans, your outcomes will be worse. If you're poor in Pittsburgh, that's awful, and you have my sympathy. No one should be poor. But if you're Black and poor in Pittsburgh, your outcomes will be worse. If you're a woman in Pittsburgh, you will not receive the same pay rate. You will face sexism and disadvantages. But if you're Black and a female, your outcomes will be significantly worse. The one common denominator that is consistent among all the factors that the Gender and Equity Study has showed us is that of race. And so it's now time, and specifically being Black. And in Pittsburgh, Blacks are the chief minority. And so now it's time to specifically unabashedly, unashamedly, begin to say Black Lives Matter, to invest in Black communities, and help African-Americans receive the wealth that has been denied them. Redlining was the primary way to make sure African-Americans did not accumulate wealth. Homeownership is the number-one way. We learned that in our post-agenda. And that those intergenerational wealth, you know, I was talking to someone earlier, you know, if you are a kid with a graduate degree in Homewood, your life outcome expectations unfortunately are not greater than a person without a degree who lives in Mount Lebanon. And one of the reasons is, is because that person in Mount Lebanon is much likely to inherit wealth from their families. He's much more likely to have a home of $300,000, $400,000, $500,000, where that kid in Homewood may be, you know, come up from a renter's family, or it may be that the house that they own is only worth $10,000 or $20,000. And so he is not going to be, or she is not going to be subject to inheriting wealth passed on from generation to generation. And so I ask for your support. Let's pass this legislation. Let's move forward to begin to actualize it. And then I'm hoping, and I am challenging our city, although not in the legislation, to begin to rebuild those historic business districts. I think, you know, the Hill District and Center Avenue comes to mind, Homewood Avenue and Homewood comes to mind, but those historic business districts that have been snatched from our communities have to be rebuilt to be symbols of Black pride and Black renaissance. We need places where African-Americans feel comfortable. They actually don't feel comfortable in the vast majority of our city, and most of the new developments that are going on, let's say, in Debs District, in the Stiff's District, in Lawrenceville, they don't feel comfortable there. So let's create communities that they are already at, for them, that they feel comfortable, and give them the amenities that they need. And so this is sort of my Magna Carta, I suppose. I'm hoping it will be. I'm grateful for the mayor's support in this. I'm hopeful that all of you can support this unanimously, that we move forward as a city together. And I think this is a way of saying unashamedly, proudly, loudly, that Black Pittsburgh matters. Being an African-American, that institutional racism is real, and being a Black person in Pittsburgh matters. And we will address these inequities, and we will do it all together to make Pittsburgh a city for all. Thank you very much for this moment.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion from members? Seeing none, I would like to chime in. First, Madam Clerk, if you would like, please add me as a co-sponsor, if that's okay with the sponsor.
Yes.
And second, Reverend, I didn't think about it until just now, when we were discussing this. I think it makes sense to add some language in here that loops in or ties in our authorities to this effort. At the URA, we've been discussing how to go about this work. And when you look at where a lot of the resources to do this is going to come from, Housing Authority, the Urban Development Authority, even PWSA would have a role. And so I think, you know, between now and Tuesday, if we could just find one line, and I'll maybe look at it to just somehow tie in the efforts of our authority to this effort. I think it makes some sense.
I think it's in Section 2. All city departments, agencies, authorities, and participating partners are requested to adopt to affirm the Black Pittsburgh Matters Strategic Investment Principles. It's Section 2 of the legislation. It's kind of hidden, but it's there.
Yeah, I see it. I apologize.
No, no, no. I think that makes sense, too. You're right. So I thought about that, too. So it's just, this is really what I hope. This becomes our guiding principle, right? We will be one of the first cities in America, actually, to adopt such a platform. And I think it can guide us, because what I'm afraid of, I'm afraid that in this moment, we would do some diversity training. We would do some come-by moments. And then 10 years from now, five years from now, a little kid in Homewood still is living in poverty and gang-infested environments. And we've not made any investment in the infrastructure of Black communities. 60% of all Black people live in those communities, and they spend 12% to 18% or 20% or 24% of their hours of their day in those communities. Until we change those communities, we will not change the outcome for African-Americans. Everything else we do, it will not, and I know, I used to do social services, right? You can put all the money into housing. You can put money in education. You can put money into all these interventions. They're good, great, hard to do them. At the same time, we must also put money into the fabric of those communities so that they look different, and they feel different, and they're safe, and they're walkable, and they're robust. And we've not done that to the scale we must. And so I want to suggest to you that we have to do all these things at the same time. Yes, education. Yes, homelessness. Yes, social services. But also stores, restaurants, vending machines, safe, not vending machines, stores, restaurants, that's from one of my classes, stores, restaurants, and housing, and amenities. And so that's what I think, and I'm talking too much. So I'm grateful for the support of the council and support of the mayor, and I'm really hopeful that this becomes really something that we can all get behind and push.
Thank you. Count, President Smith?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say that I just heard part of the conversation, but I just want to say, you know, I want to make sure that we're including areas that have population that may not have the majority of African-American communities, but have a significant amount of people that are of color in those communities. Especially when I look at Crafton Heights, there's a lot of need in Crafton Heights, because it's one of the areas with the, had a high increase of population, but with single-family households. And so that area needs investment. Sheridan, obviously, everybody knows, needs investment, but they're actually starting to get investment, and as soon as what we're seeing now is the property values in Sheridan are starting to increase tremendously, in large part because of the Porter Project and the Sheridan Park Master Plan. Two projects that all of a sudden, we've done numerous programs, stabilization programs in the area, but this seems to be what's taking off. But I don't want to see it take off so much that we gentrify an area. So I think having that balance is important, too. But I look at Elliott, and they have a small business district with need. And actually, one of my most stable neighborhoods is my only predominantly African-American community, and that's Shorter City. They have the highest homeownership in the entire city of Pittsburgh, 90% homeownership, and low crime, and it's just a fantastic neighborhood. But they also have a small business district that needs investment. So on record, they may look stable, and they may look fine, but they need some investment, too. And so I just want us to be, to talk about some of this stuff. I think when we talk about the business districts, it helps with stabilization, because it also brings jobs to the community, which are desperately needed. And education and the social services is something I've been harping on, because I think that we do need a lot more in terms of social services. I'd like to see us collaborate better with the county and make sure that I'd like to see us collaborate better with the county and, um, make sure that we're getting the types of services, doing needs assessments and make sure we're getting the types of services that are actually needed in the neighborhoods that, that we represent in the city of Pittsburgh. I don't think that, that happens. I think we just are given whatever we're given and, and there's no like real, real effort into what the needs are. And so I, I just wish we would work better, a little bit better with the county on that. But I just want to make sure I mention that there are other areas that may not look on paper, that they need help, but they do too.
Absolutely. Any further discussion?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I want to concur about the infrastructure investments and, um, like, well, Councilwoman Strasburger is on the Board of PWSA now. Um, during my time there, I pushed for our, um, investments at PWSA to be focused on low-income communities across the city. Specifically, when we started to do, uh, lead water service line replacements, we prioritized areas that were low or moderate income first, and also that had a high proportion of children in the households, according to the census. Um, and we did do a lot of that infrastructure work in minority communities across the city. Um, and you've seen those projects happen in the Hill District, on other Hilltop communities, in the East End and Homewood. But PWSA can go further. We know that half of the mains under our streets are also deficient and need to be replaced. Um, and it only makes sense to target those replacements in areas where it's going to add to this, literally the physical stabilization of those neighborhoods. Um, you really cannot build up above ground if you've got collapsing infrastructure underground. We've talked about that as a council before. Um, and so, but it's something I think for the public to keep their eyes on because like another, but like in our city council budgets, these authorities' budgets have to make choices. They cannot do everything everywhere at once. Um, so I'm glad that you thought to include that language and are working on that. So for the URA, when it does infrastructure, and when PWSA does infrastructure, when the other authorities do them, and even really we can negotiate with our private utility companies, when we're doing utility coordination, we have the permitting power as, um, in our Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. And it is just actually even more efficient for the taxpayer for us to not be doing little pieces as maybe a big developer wants here, there, or scattered places around the city. But to really focus on in the, in the infrastructure language at PWSA, um, a single network of water mains is a distribution, um, uh, district, or a pressure district sometimes called, right? And so, um, which is similar to a sewer sheds, but it's not the sewers, it's the water mains. So keeping your eyes on both of those kinds of infrastructure, we can stabilize entire systems instead of just doing a patchwork, which just leads to breaks down the line in that system. So, um, I'm glad that, that you thought to include that. This is, I think, um, an integration of a lot of separate conversations that we've been having as a council over the years because of Councilman Burgess and Councilman Lavelle's leadership. And, um, it's, it definitely is time, and we definitely can see that we have community support for these investments. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Any last discussion from members? Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'll keep it short. Thank you, Councilwoman Gross, for bringing up PWSA, and that's, I think, exactly right. I want to commend Reverend Burgess and, and Councilman Lavelle for, um, for bringing this forward today. I am going to borrow a statement I heard recently from Bakari Sellers, who is a former state representative of South Carolina and an author and commentator, who pointed out that, um, and it's a lot of what I'm hearing and what I heard in Reverend Burgess's statements today, which is that it's so, it's so, uh, it's so easy to hear that there are issues and challenges, major, major challenges and great inequities that face people of color, Black people in particular, in cities across the country, including Pittsburgh, and then come up with policies that are race-neutral as an answer. And what I'm hearing today and what we've known for a while is we cannot solve race-specific problems with race-neutral policies. And that is, um, something, it's, 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 it's difficult to do that. It's the more challenging way to go sometimes. But, you know, I'm a firm believer that in some cases, rising tides do not lift all boats. We, in some cases, and this is one case where we do need, I am a strong believer, we do need race-specific policies to make up for 400 years of inequity um, against one particular race. So, um, I just wanted to state that, that that is my understanding of what is being discussed today, and I'm with you on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill is recommended. Thank you very much, all. We have no invoices today. We also have no interdepartmental transfers, so that takes us to our P cards. May I please have a motion to approve the P cards?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I now need a motion to waive Rule 11. We have two public safety, um, Bill, two public safety invoices that are on our P cards of $8,000, which exceeds our $5,000 limit. So can I have a motion to waive Rule 11, so those can also be approved?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the waiver of Rule 11, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The, what, rules are waived. All those in favor of P cards, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to our Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Mr. O'Connor. We have one new paper, Bill 441.
Bill 441, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the U.S. Department of Justice for Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $676,895 for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. We have one supplemental paper, Bill 485.
Bill 485, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to Grant a Temporary Construction Easement to 2013 PA Brushton LLC to Perform Land Stabilizing Work.
Need a motion? I don't believe Mr. Coghill is on it.
Yeah, he's not here.
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our one new paper, um, still under Mr. Coghill's committee, uh, Bill 436.
Bill 436, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into a Temporary Right-of-Entry and License Agreement Between the City and the Four Home Owners for the Purpose of Repairing the Slopes Through Soil Stabilization at the Rear of the Homeowner's Property Adjacent and in Freight Park.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill recommended. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Mr. Wilson. We have two deferred papers, Bill 236.
Bill 236, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Ewalt House located at 186 Home Street in the Lawrenceville Neighborhood, 9th Ward.
Motion to hold one week.
Second. Motion to hold in seconded for one week.
Councilman, you ready for it?
Yes. Oh, you're having a sad conversation, sorry. Uh, all those in favor of the hold, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is held one week. That takes us to Bill 237.
Bill 237, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Maori Addison House located at 5134 Carnegie Street in the Lawrenceville Neighborhood, 10th Ward.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Councilman Burgess?
Is, is this, is, is the, is the owner supportive in this case?
Uh, yes, and this, um, in the Maori, uh, I will, actually, let me defer to the, the Councilwoman Gross.
Yeah, actually, we've, we've heard all supportive testimony on this one, Councilman Burgess. So I'd actually have to pull it up myself. This is not the one where we've had the owner objecting. So I'm, I'm gonna default by saying I, I'm pretty sure, but I don't have it right in front of me.
I'll try. I, I, as long as the owner's, you know, supportive, I'm supportive.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Lavelle?
Yes, Councilwoman Smith?
Hey, I just want to point out that that, on Bill, I think it's, uh, 0236 for the, um, the one we just put on hold, the Ewalt House, that we have to have that voted on by when, Madam Clerk, do you remember?
Uh, it needs to be on Standing Committee by July 15th.
So I just want to make sure that you're aware, um, Mr. Chair, and that, um, the clerk's office and, um, the chairperson, because we have to at least, yeah, place the vote. I don't want, because otherwise it becomes by default, correct?
Correct. If we don't vote, it gets approved by default.
Yeah, and I won't want that to happen. I mean, we need to take the, whether we approve or not, we need to take it. Um, the people deserve that much. Okay. I just want to make sure that we're talking about two separate ones. Thank you.
Yep. Any further discussion on Bill 237? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Innovation, Performance and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. We have two new papers, Bill 494.
Bill 494, Resolution Amending and Supplementing Resolution 539, which authorized the mayor, the city clerk and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a contract with Granite Inc. or software upgrades, server hosting services and annual maintenance of Legistar Agenda Management and Video Streaming in order to extend the contract an additional 12 months for a total cost of $247,722.22.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Councilwoman Strasburger?
I am, um, happy to turn this over to who, whomever would like to, to discuss. I don't know if that's you, Madam Clerk, or a representative from Innovation and Performance.
So, uh, we actually went out to RFP for an agenda management system, um, last year. And we selected a company called Prime Gov to kind of take us to the next level of agenda management. And, uh, once we got into that process, the, the owner and two of the main, our project manager and another gentleman that was, uh, one of the main proponents of the, the management system abruptly left the company. Uh, and since that time, uh, uh, Prime Gov had not been able to produce. They were gonna, we were gonna lose a lot of our data. They could only give us maybe like 10 years of, of data. Uh, so we decided that we would, in order to, to prevent losing our data and, um, going with a system that was not ready to take us to the next level, we just decided that we would actually extend with Granite as another year, if we have to go back out for RFP to, uh, to again, search for, uh, a company that we don't have to use. I, I think it's still behind times that we're using two different agenda management systems to do one function. You know, so Granite is this is standard, uh, and there are some people that are coming on that actually goes above just the basic standard, and we're, we're seeking to, to improve on that area if we can. So right now, we would need to extend with Granite as for a year in order to, um, go back out for RFP.
And Madam Clerk, you've pointed out in the past that they owe us, this is not just a program that serves the clerk's office and city council. It's meant to be a citywide.
It, it was designed.
So they owe us some, uh, some training, it sounds like.
Absolutely, absolutely. This actually, this, this software was designed for the entire city to have use of. Our boards of commission has never been used, and right now, we only use this software for the last 17 years in the clerk's office, which is not designed to do. So Granite has never actually came down and, and, uh, they came down, but they did not train sufficiently the entire city on the use of this product. Uh, so we are still even working with them now to see if actually we can in-house train everybody to use the product even within this year. Uh, so I'm working with my staff, I'm working with IMP, and I'm also working with Granite to see if we can get the additional training that we need to, every department should be using this product. And if it's, it's a true paperless system, we should not be still transferring paper manually to submit our legislation.
Thank you. I have no further questions. I don't know if any other members have questions.
No. Any further discussion from members? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. I would also like to acknowledge that, uh, Councilman Coghill has joined us for the record. Uh, Bill 442.
Bill 442, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 389, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Permits, Licenses and Inspection to enter into an agreement to purchase a Cellar Civic Platform and a Cellar Citizen Access Subscription and Cloud Hosting Services as so as to extend the contract an additional year into June 30th, 2021, and increase the not-to-exceed cost from $1,269,962.16 to $1,289,919.29.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
May I, Mr. Chair, just one brief comment?
Yes.
Um, so I feel like we had this discussion last year, and this is not a huge increase, right? It looks like, is it, am I reading this right? Is it only like an extra like $20,000? Um, but we're kind of still limping along with the Cellar that we're, we're, I'm assuming, almost done. We had stopped using it, decided it wasn't going to meet our needs, if I'm remembering from a year ago, I feel like. And we've moved on to different platforms for just integrating the GIS layers across the authorities and development permitting and all that kind of stuff. Does this ringing a bell for anyone?
I'm happy to call up, um, Director, interim Director, or Acting Director Kinter.
Would you mind? Is she, is she with us?
I'm available, yes.
Okay, thank you. If you could just clarify that for me, we don't need a long discussion, I don't believe. But I think it does need a little bit of closure, so if you could just speak to it for a minute.
Yep, you are absolutely right. So we have been, uh, taking down Excela as we go. We just had Domi enter into the one-stop PGH system. This extension is for one year. Our number of licenses went from 126 to, I think we're gonna have less than 30, which is why the cost has also decreased. Um, last step for next year, hopefully, is to stand up all the data that's inside Excela and move away from Excela altogether.
Good. We're, and we're looking forward to that, I think.
Yes, we are.
Fair enough. And the days of Excela will be over.
That's right.
Okay. Just, just wanting to make sure I was, you know, remember it correctly. Appreciate it, Director. Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Bill is recommended. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. We have three deferred papers, Bill 362.
You know, Madam Clerk, would you read the three deferred together?
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Sure. Bill 362, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Soil Facilities Plan for Donkin Street Town Homes at 5308 through 5314 Donkin Street. Bill Number 363, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Soil Facilities Plan for 52nd Street Town Homes at 724 and 728 52nd Street. Bill Number 364, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Soil Facilities Plan for 39th Street Homes at 204206 and 208 39th Street.
Motion to hold one week.
A second.
All those in favor of the call, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bills are held one week. We have two new papers, Bill 437.
Bill 437, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Soil Facilities Plan for the Fort Condominiums 2637 and 2641 Penn Avenue.
Also, motion to hold one week.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bill is held one week.
Oh.
Bill 438?
Bill 438, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Soil Facilities Plan for the Pittsburgh Distilling Company, 2401 Small Miss Street.
Motion to hold one week.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chair, would you mind if I just make a comment out of order here? So I have staff having checked every single one of these. And I appreciate that it's difficult for people trying to move through our system as everyone's working remotely. And so all of these ones are still just shy, a couple of other permits. So we have been tracking them. They are making progress. And I just wanted to acknowledge for everyone, because I know this is a source of pain for people trying to build things in the city, but we want to make sure that everything is in line before we, you know, go through our vote as well. So they're all very close. So I think next week we'll have resolution on them.
Thank you for your due diligence. We did vote, so the bill is held one week. That exhausts our agenda for today. We do have a number of meeting announcements. Cablecast Public Hearing is scheduled for this afternoon, Wednesday, July 1st at 5:00 P M on Bills 200 and 201 as they relate to the Racial Equity Commission and the 10 Commitments on Racial Equity. Also, next Wednesday, July 8th at 5:00 P M, council will hold a Cablecast Public Hearing on Bill 447 as it relates to adding to the 2020 November general election valid a referendum question to expand the independent citizen police review board. To speak at these hearings, please call the City Clerk's Office at 412-255-2138 by 3:30 today and by 3:30 P M on the 8th. You may also submit comments by email via cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. I just want to make sure everyone realizes that in order to speak, you must pre-register. Also, all City of Pittsburgh municipal offices will be closed this Friday, July 3rd. That ends our meeting announcements. Is there any announcements from members?
Councilman?
President Smith?
Thank you. I just want to register an i-vote for the votes I missed. And then I do want to say that we are also working with the clerk's office. We have some dates scheduled for our post-agenda and post-agendas and for our public hearings in terms of the police bills. We're gonna have three dates for the hearing, so that we break up the dates. We'll have two in the evening and one on a Saturday. So the clerk's office is working on that and we'll get that information out to the public, into members as soon as we can. And I'd like to work with the chairperson of that committee as well.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements from members? Seeing none, we need a motion to excuse an absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.